My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll call attendance Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey, here. Trustee Menard absent. Trustee Southwick, present. Trustee Arno, present. Mayor LaBounty, here.
Next on the list would be, Trustee Southwick, gonna take his oath.
Trustee Southwick, I ask you to clean your raiting. Perfect. All right.
Have a good side cameraman?
So I see repeat after being, you would please. I Nicholas Southwick.
I Nicholas Southwick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
Congratulations, Trustee Southwick.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you want to take a picture again? There you go.
Here, please.
Give me a handshake. Good.
You got it?
Thank you, Mr. Latchmore.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be, I'm gonna open the public hearing for the Village of Ross's Point budget twenty five, twenty six. The time now is seven oh three P M. Nobody has signed up from the public to address the board on, in regards to the budget, so I'll throw the, uh, public comment from anybody in the audience. Does anybody wish to address the board? Nobody wants to address the board? It is now approximately seven oh four P M. And I'm gonna close the public hearing on the Village of Ross's Point budget for the year twenty five, twenty six. Next will be the public hearing of, on the Village of Ross's Point solar rates for twenty five, twenty six. And the time now is seven oh four P M. Nobody has signed up from the public to address the board in regards to the hearing on the solar rates? I will, uh, address the members of the audience. Does anybody like to address the board? Nobody has chosen to address the board, so I'm gonna close the public hearing for the solar rates for the Village of Ross's Point twenty five, twenty six, and it is seven oh four P M. Next on is the, uh, open, uh, the meeting going into regular session. And from there, we'll go into the, uh, open the meeting to the public. Nobody from the public has chosen to address this board. So I will go on to the next item on the agenda, which is minutes from the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty five, regular meetings, and a special meeting that was held on, uh, April third, two thousand twenty five. All the trustees should have, uh, a copy of those minutes in their packet. If there's no discussions on those minutes, then I need a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
I make a.
I just have one correction on the, for the March seventeenth, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, my name listed is missing from the present. But I'm also, but in the meeting minutes is having made motions and discussed, and I was there.
Okay. So noted. Anything else, gentlemen? If not, then I need, I need a motion to accept the, the minutes as printed for those three meetings.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed for the last three meetings.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as printed for March seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty five, and a special meeting of April third, two thousand twenty five, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, any additions or deletions, Mr. Treasurer?
There is none this evening.
Okay. Uh, everybody should have a copy of the, uh, bills in their packet. If there's no, uh, questions on those bills, then I need a motion to pay the bills as printed.
I make a motion, we, uh, pay the bills as printed.
I'll second that. All those in favor of paying the bills as printed, say aye.
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 All those, uh, opposed, say no. The, uh, ayes have it, bills will be paid. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, two things this evening. The first thing is, we've had some calls at the village office about the spring cleanup. So I wanna advise everybody, the spring cleanup days for the Village of Ross's Point will run from May fifth, two thousand twenty five, until May ninth of two thousand twenty five. There will be absolutely no pickups after this date of Friday, May ninth of two thousand twenty five. Resident, residents are reminded that this collection is for the pickup of bagged leaves, shrubs, and tree limbs that are less than three inch diameter only. There will be no pickup of paint cans, tires, stumps, waste oil, stones, cement, or wood. Residents are required to have all leaves in a clear bag only, and to be placed at the curbside in such a position that the parked cars not block the pickup items. This will be greatly facilitate the collection. Now, please note, at the beginning of October of last year, the Village of Ross's Point residents will no longer be available to leave their loose leaves in plastic bags for cold curbside. Instead, you'll have to use biodegradable paper bags for yard waste. That worked out very well this, this fall, so I'm asking everybody to sit, follow the same protocol, and no plastic bags will be accepted.
Okay, and I just wanna emphasize what the administrator said. We have to have a final date, and we've given that to the people, the residents. We cannot continue just to go and pick up stuff all during the, the summer months. Our public works, uh, have other projects to do. That's why we've given a final, a date for the pickup, and we are gonna stick to that date. So there will be no complaints. Everybody should be well aware of the, of the final date. Mr. Latchmore just, uh, said it publicly, and we will proceed with our regular duties after that date. I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Latchmore, you can continue.
Yes, so, uh, one other thing that I, that I would like to do is, I know that, um, the board did mention, I believe it was back in February, that the board would be presenting, um, an update on the water plant. At this point in time, I, I would like to, uh, address the board and let them know, I, I believe I spoke to all the trustees, but not the residents. So, right now, what the Village of Ross's Point is waiting for, um, is the EPA can provide us with a closing date. So that's the money through the federal government, which is gonna be in the amount of two million dollars. The five million dollars has been secured. We haven't closed on that, because we're not closing on that until the EPA money is secured, based upon the recommendation of our engineering firm, uh, Barton LeJudas. They asked us not to move forward with the, uh, water plant project, because if the federal government decides to pull that two million dollars, it's really gonna put us in a, in a deficit that we're not sure that we want to deal with at this point in time. So, waiting for a closing date, once we close on the money, then it'll be secure, and then we'll be able to proceed to move forward with breaking ground.
And let me just add, maybe some people won't like these comments, but we had it all approved when this infrastructure bill was passed by the House of Representatives to Senate and signed into law by then-President Biden. The municipality filled out, uh, all the paperwork. I participated with, uh, the administrator. We did everything we were, uh, had to do. We were promised this money, and now we're, it's in question. The chaos is not on our part. The chaos is on one man's part. And we're hoping that this, this will end rather quickly, because we're gonna be behind in our start date, and it's nonsense that we shouldn't be behind. This is sure, that project should have been well underway with bids and everything else without this chaos. And I'll temper my comments any further, but just to let the residents know, we have done everything that we have to do. Uh, anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Next on the list will be mayor appointments, and I'll read those off as fine as follows. Deputy Mayor for a term of one year will be Trustee Menard. Village Clerk, Registrar Christopher Latchmore, two years. Deputy Village Clerk, Presenter Patty Garen, two years. Treasurer Arsene Letourneau, two years. Deputy Treasurer Rebecca Pelkey, one year. Attorney Matthew H. McCardle, annually. Budget Officer Arsene Letourneau, one year. I E E P Officer John LaBounty, one year. Zoning Board of Appeals Matthew Favrell, four-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals Mike Mumley, three-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals Brett Favrell, three-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals Charmin Burke, four-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate Tammy Segwin, two-year term. Our bank will now be TD Bank, Champlain National Bank. Official newspaper will be the Press Republican. EMS Advisory Board Delegate Walter Laramie, one year. EMS Advisory Board Alternate Junior Moore, one year. Fire Advisory Board Delegate Mike LeBlanc, one year. Fire Advisory Board Alternate Sean LeBumbarbe, one year. Fire Chief Michael LeBlanc, for a term of one year. First Assistant Chief Sean LeBumbarbe, one year. Second Assistant Chief Chris Matat, one year. Next item will be mayor commissional appointments, and they'll be as follows. Water and Solar Committee, the chairperson will be Nicholas Southwick, trustee. Benjamin Arno will be the co-chairman, trustee. Electrical Department Benjamin Arno, trustee, chairman. Co-chairman will be Dale Menard, trustee. Community Development Planning, Zoning and Codes, trustee Dale Menard will be the chairperson. Nicholas Southwick will be the co-chairperson. Fire and EMS Welcome Center will be chairperson Benjamin Arno, trustee. Uh, co-chairman Brian Pelkey, trustee. Public Works, co-chairperson will be Brian Pelkey, trustee. Co-chairperson will be Nicholas Southwick, trustee. Personnel and Insurance will be trustee, chairperson, uh, Brian Pelkey. Co-chairperson will be trustee Dale Menard. Parks and Recs, trustee, chairperson will be Nicholas Southwick. Co-chairperson will be trustee Brian Pelkey.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, library? You don't have a committee for library. You don't have to? Oh, okay. We haven't, we have never had. Oh, okay. Unless you wanna add it. Well, I, could I go to the meetings all the time? Dale's supposed to be the chairman. But I always went in Dale's place and stuff like that, so. So do you wanna do library? Could I go to all the meetings and stuff?
Well, I'll, I'll, under the library, then, I'll have chairperson, uh, Benjamin Arno as trustee, co-chairperson will be, uh, Dale Menard, uh, trustee. Next item would be, uh, the review of the regular meetings for twenty, year, uh, coming up, twenty five, twenty six. And I'll, the schedule should be in everybody's packet, and I will read this into the record. All meetings will be held at the Halsted Hall located at the Civic Center at thirty-nine Lake Street, Ross's Point, New York, on the first and third Mondays, and will begin promptly at seven P M. Unless otherwise noted, all meetings will be open to the public. Everybody has the, the schedule. I need a motion to accept the schedule as posted.
I'll make a motion that we accept the schedule as posted.
I'll second that.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The schedule for the year twenty five, twenty six for the village board meetings has been set by the board. Next up will be the review of the village's policies for the year twenty five, uh, twenty six, and renewing these policies. I don't believe there's been any changes, Mr. Latchmore, is that correct?
There have been no changes.
You want, there have been a few.
There hasn't been, but this is the time, if you wanna make changes, that we need to, uh, assess which ones.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the, the following into the record. Procurement Policy and Procedures, Conflict of Interest Policy, Family and Medical Leave of Absence Policy, Confined Space Entry Procedure, Fund Balance Policy, Electric L D, LED Signed Message Board Usage Policy, Non-Travition Funds Return Checks Policy, Sale of Surplus Materials Policy, Ethics Code of Conduct Policy, Rules and Procedure for the Board of Trustees' Public Meetings, Policy Against Discrimination and Harassment, Sexual Harassment Policy, Alcohol, Marijuana and Drug Policy, Vehicle Use Policy, Use of Village Pro, uh, Property Policy, Workplace Violence Prevention, Prevention Policy, Incident Reporting, Sick Leave Donation Policy, Full-Time Non-Bargaining Unit Employees, Travel Policy, Internet and Acceptable Use Policy, Hazard Communication Program, and last, Investment Policy. All the trustees should have a copy of these policies in their packet. If there's any missing, the administrator will, will make sure you have it, but, uh, everyone should have this.
I would just like to note, uh, Mayor, that the Hazard Communication Program, each department, you will see in your packet, has a different protocol for the Hazard Communication Program. So you, you should have one for each department.
Okay. If, uh, nobody has any questions on the board, then I need a motion to accept these, uh, review these policies for the year twenty five, twenty six.
I shall move on the policies.
I'll second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The policies have been adopted for the year twenty five, twenty six by the village board. Next will be the Village of Ross's Point Budget Resolution for the, uh, which is Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash thirteen. Any questions on that, gentlemen? Then I need a motion to, uh, accept the budget resolution for the, uh, year twenty five, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six for the Village of Ross's Point.
Mayor.
I make a motion, we accept the, oh, res, resolution for twenty five. Twenty, you, you, the budget one. You're not on the budget one right now.
Excuse me?
You're on the water one. Go to the budget one.
That's what I've got. The budget, uh, oh, excuse me, the budget, uh, Ross's Point Bud, twenty-five dash thirteen. So I need a motion to accept the resolution, uh, for the budget, twenty-five dash thirteen.
Read it into the record, the budget, the, uh, resolution, please.
Okay, just a second, I mean, we'll find it.
It's gonna be right after your, uh. Give you the third one from the bottom.
It's a very large packet this week.
I know, but I tried to put it in order for everybody.
The resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing June first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, making appropriations for the conduct of the village government, and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas the Board of Trustees has met at the time in place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative budget, and heard all persons desiring to be heard. Therefore, be it resolved that the tentative budget as here, herein after, set forth, is hereby adopted, several amounts stated in the column that will final budget adopted. And the resolution shall take effect immediately. And I need a, once again, a motion to accept resolution on the budget twenty-five dash thirteen.
I make a motion, we accept, uh, resolution twenty-five thirteen, dash thirteen.
Second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The, uh, budget for this, uh, proposed budget has been passed by this board. Next on the, uh, agenda will be the water rate, which is Resolution twenty-five dash, oh, excuse me, solar rate, which is twenty-five dash fourteen. And, and I will read this to record the following. Whereas subdivision two, section four fifty-two, the general municipal law was amended to permit establishment in the position of solar rents by Resolution subject to public hearing in village law, section fourteen dash fourteen hundred, was amended to clarify a village authority to establish and impose solar rents pursuant to general municipal law, section four fifty-two, and. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ross's Point, County of Clinton, New York, did on the seventh day of April, two thousand twenty-five, hold a public hearing at Halsted Hall at the Civic Center located at thirty-nine Lake Street, the Village of Ross's Point, at seven o'clock P M, or shortly thereafter regarding the proposed solar rates, based on the following. And the solar rates will be going up a dollar per household. And if there's no discussion on that, then I need a motion to accept the increase of a dollar per household on the solar rates.
I make a motion, we accept, uh, resolution twenty-five dash fourteen on the solar rates.
I'll second that.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash fourteen, increasing the solar rates by a dollar, has been passed by this board. Next on the agenda is the Resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, which is the water rates resolution. Whereas the Board of Trustees, Ross's Point, keeps it necessary to amend the rates to reflect current department operations. The water rate will increase by a dollar per household, and I need a motion to accept that, unless there must be discussion on it.
I just wanted to repeat that first line there, is to reflect current water department operations. This is just, anyway, it's because of cost of doing business.
That, that, exactly. That's taken in consideration, the cost of benefit levels, uh, pay, and, and the operating of, uh, the chemicals and equipment needed for, uh, providing the residents with the, uh, water.
Unfortunately, the village is not immune to the cost of everything going on.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I make a res, uh, I make a resolution on, uh, water rates, uh, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
I'll second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash fifteen for the water rate has been approved by this board. Next is the, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen, N E A U proxy resolution, and I'll read it. At a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Village of Ross's Point, New York, held on April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the following resolution was adopted. Whereas the Board of Trustees, the Village of Ross's Point, New York, is a municipal member of the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York State, and. Whereas the Annual Conference of the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York State has been called to be held on May twenty-first and May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, to be held at the Embassy Suites at, by Hilton Destiny, USA, in Syracuse, New York. Whereas, in accordance with the bylaws of the Municipal Electric Association of New York State, each municipality, municipal member may cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. And I need a, uh, authorization to have a proxy vote for, uh, this meeting on the twenty-first and the twenty-second.
Uh, correction, on, uh, date, the date is twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, it should be twenty twenty-five. I make a motion that we pass, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, vote by proxy.
Second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The resolution has been passed by the board for a proxy vote. Next will be, uh, a proxy vote for the, uh, NIFO. And I'm gonna read this into the record. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ross's Point, New York, is a municipal member of the New York Municipal Power Agency, and. Whereas the annual meeting of the agency will be held on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, in Syracuse, New York. And whereas, in accordance with the bylaws of this New York Municipal Power Tho, Agency, each municipality may cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. And this is gonna be, allow a proxy vote on behalf of the village at this meeting to be held in Maine, in, in Syracuse. And if there's, uh, any questions or discussions, we can do it now. If not, then I need a motion to pass Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
I'll second that.
We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. The Resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five seventeen has been passed for a proxy vote at the NIFO meeting. Next on the agenda is, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, Village of Ross's Point Capital Equipment Purchase. And I'll read that into the record. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point established a capital reserve type fund to help finance the cost of acquisition of a pickup truck for the wastewater and water departments pursuant to section six dash C, six G of the general municipal law is amended. Whereas the Board of Trustees is of the opinion that the two thousand twenty-four GMC Sierra K fifteen hundred pickup was purchased for the sum of no more than forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The cost split between the water and solar funds purchased will be financed from the water fund vehicle replacement reserve of seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, the solar fund vehicle replacement reserve of ten thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and current appropriations from each fund respectfully. Whereas the useful life of said vehicle pursuant to section eleven, subdivision twenty-three of local finance laws, five years. And whereas section six dash C dash eight of the general municipal law requires that an expenditure of the capital reserve type fund be subject to permission of referendum. Now be it resolved that the Village of Ross's Point purchased a two thousand twenty-four GMC Sierra K fifteen hundred pickup truck. The expenditure is subject to permission of referendum. The res, this resolution shall not take effect until at least forty-five days after its adoption, nor until it's approved by a permanent vote, the majority of the qualified electors of the local government voting in preposition for its approval. Within forty-five days after its adoption, therefore, there be filled with a clerk, a petition protesting against such local law, signed and authenticated as required by qualified election of such local government, registered to vote therein at the last proceeding general election, in a number equal to at least ten percent central of the total number of votes capped for the governor of last gubernatorial election and general government. And I need a motion, unless anybody wants to discuss this capital equipment purchase, and this resolution is twenty-five dash eighteen.
Is this the same truck that does purchase, like, a, what, a year ago?
Last June, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, it's not an old one that?
No, it's just this resolution wasn't adopted yet.
Okay, so it's just.
At least I couldn't find where it was adopted anywhere, so, when I was doing the budget, I picked this out.
Okay, good catch, Mr. Treasurer. I'll make a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
I'll second that. We'll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen has been passed by the board. Next will be, uh, uh, Village of Ross's Point Authorization Official to Sign the, the Labor Relations. We come to an agreement, uh, and I'll read this as follows, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point has been awarded Northern Border Res, uh, Regional Commission, N B R C, funding under contract, N B R C one nine, G N Y oh three, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for land acquisition, design, and construction for new water treatment facility. Now, therefore, John J. LeBunny Mayor is authorized on behalf of the village to act as unauthorized officer and to expend grant funds from N B R C. And I need a, uh, And I need a resolution or a motion to pass this resolution, given me the authority to sign this document.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it, resolution twenty-five dash nineteen has been passed by the board. And then last, the S. E. S. C. S. E. A. contract wages for June twenty, June first, two thousand twenty-five, has been signed in agreement, and I need a motion to allow me to sign the wage contract with the C. S. E. A. union. Any discussions in that, gentlemen?
I'll put in the form of a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the C. S. E. A. union contract wage negotiation.
I'll second.
I'll take a roll call vote on that, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it, the board has authorized me to sign the new wage agreement effective June first, two thousand twenty-five, for the village employees that are affected. That's all I have. Next one on the agenda will be, trustee Arnold, do you have anything?
Yes, talking to the street crew and stuff on the trees on Lake Street, they're pretty bad, their limbs are falling off in them, and they're pretty well dead, there's two or three of them. And also that big, big tree in the park, it's pushing up the sidewalk, and that's also got a big hole in one of the big limbs. Before it splits and falls in the road, I think we ought to remove it too. What part, Manny, may I ask? The park, Ralph's Park. Yeah, it's soft maple.
Okay, if we have any questions, or I don't contact you, but I, it should be pretty obvious based on what you're saying where these trees look.
Yeah.
Okay. If they're obviously diseased or dangerous, then we are obligated to remove them.
So what trees on Lake Street, and are they gonna, do you want them completely removed?
Yes, completely removed.
So do you know the location?
The one right across from Ray's Appliance.
Across from Ray's, okay.
The one across from, uh, Frenchie's, across the street from Frenchie's.
Okay.
And the next one down is in front of Gary Babby's.
From Sandy's?
No, Gary Babby Junior's, right next to Vicki Hair Salon.
Okay.
Do we have something in place, Mr. Latchamore, when these trees become diseased in these areas to replant another tree in its place?
They'd be better off not to plant them, because they're growing into the buildings, and the people that own the buildings say they're brushing up against the buildings and stuff.
Okay.
And that's why we should remove them all and stuff.
Does anybody else have an opinion, trustee Pelkey, on these trees?
I know the one in front of eighty-nine lake, there's a big limb that came off and landed in the road, and the top of it is all dead disease. And these were planted back in ninety-two when the state came through and did Main Street, and of course, they're growing and they're getting oversized, and they're starting to rub on the buildings, and I know if I was one of the building owners, I'd be a little concerned also.
Okay.
So they should have planted something that was smaller, that could be groomed and taken care of. But now you have a big massive root base in there, and in order to get that out to plant something, you'd have a big problem. You'd have to do a lot of work in taking the cobblestones out and.
Not only that, the power wires go down through there for the streetlights and stuff like that on both sides, so.
So those are, we'll remove the tree, and then we'll have to move some of the cobblestone and stump it, and then put some cobblestone where the stumps were.
I know the one in front of eighty-nine lake is really bad. I brought that to the Public Works' attention, and we agreed that that needs to really come down. It's bad.
So you want all of them down?
I didn't know about the other two, but you know, if they're diseased or they're overgrown.
If they're as bad as trustee Arnold said, we might as well get rid of them then.
Well, I don't think they're as bad as the first one, by eighty-nine.
By eighty-nine, that's a really bad one.
But they, they look like they're rubbing on the, when the wind is blowing, they rub on the building and stuff.
Okay.
We could trim them unless you wanna, unless you wanna leave them there.
But that one at eighty-nine should come down.
Right.
That's diseased and it's.
And one in the park, that big one in the park, Ralph's Park, should come down.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll look and see if it's feasible to trim them, if not, then we'll remove them. What do you think, Mr. Latchamore?
It's up to the board. I mean, I, I just think it's nice to have some type of foliage, you know?
It is. But like I said, the first one at eighty-nine is diseased and is dead.
But if they're hitting the building, they need to be trimmed back.
Yes, they should have been trimmed through the years, unfortunately, it's never been, haven't been groomed like that. Because I mean, you can control the height of a tree if you trim it, but.
And how close is it to like the electric and?
Well, it's right underneath them.
It's right underneath them?
Right underneath them, yeah, because the electric goes right along the side.
That's not good for your utilities underneath there for that root base to.
Well, it's, it's mostly the, uh, the streetlights and stuff like that that's right along the side.
They look nice when they put them in, when they're young, when they're small, but as they get older.
Like you said, if you don't trim them, then they're gonna get out of hand.
Well, there used to be a steel, a steel thing around them, like a two, uh, three by three steel cage around them, and put crushed stone in them and stuff instead of stone or paving box, and Adam had to take them out because they were pushing up out of the ground and stuff. So he had to cut them out of there.
I mean, we can take them down, and at some point, we find something that doesn't, you know?
Put like a small flowering tree there or something like that, yeah.
Something that we can manage.
Yeah.
Anything else, trustee Arnold?
Uh, yes, I have, uh, wish to inform the, a new member for the Ross Point Fire Department for six months probation, Thomas Goodrow the third, twenty-one A Maple Street, Ross
Any discussion on the new member? If not, then I need a motion to accept the new member to the fire department.
I put forth having Thomas Goodrow the third, a motion as a new member through the fire department.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. We have a new member from the fire department, welcome. Anything else, trustee Arnold?
Uh, no.
Okay, and trustee Pelkey.
Yes, I have a couple things. We received our new plow truck, we're working on putting it in service as a dump truck for the summer, so the new truck is here. If anyone wants to see it, it's up at the garage. Talked to the Public Works Supervisor, they're gonna start their sweeping hopefully Monday, so we'll see them out, starting to pick up the sand, so people are asking when the sand will be picked up. As long as the snow is off, they will be out Monday. The next thing I want to bring to the public's attention is we do have job openings, we have, we had three people retired, and we still have one opening at the Public Works for, for employee that works in the street department. And now that we're competitive with wages and we offer a good benefit package, I mean, I think people should at least look at the village, it is a good place to work, the supervisors are excellent, they, you know, they've been here for the village for many years, and they work with us very well, and talk to the other employees, it seems like everybody's pretty happy. Like I said, our wages now are comparable.
Very competitive.
They're very, they're very competitive with other municipalities, so if there's anyone out there, we do have openings. I'd just like to have them apply so we can start looking at some, some applications, so we can do some interviews, so we can get some of these jobs fulfilled.
And to fill that, also, we have, we're gonna have two rec center employees that are retiring, we're gonna have two more openings there, so. And we took, we took great pains to make sure, by talking to the other municipalities, we checked what the rage weight was, and we're now in the same ballpark as any of these other municipalities, and as trustee Pelkey said, we offer a nice benefit package, so we're hoping with this wage increase and the benefit package, we can start to fill some of these positions that have been vacant for a number of years and will become vacant in the near future, so anybody interested in a nice, good job, please apply and come to the office, we have applications, and somebody will be there to help you whatever you need. Anything else, trustee Pelkey?
I have one last thing. I know, being involved with the electric department through the years, there's rules and regulations that do change, and of course, there's new people in place that now there's more, like before, when you had to do like an upgrade to electrical service, you didn't need a permit, you met with, like myself, the supervisor of the electric department, we discussed where the meter was going, what size meter it was. Well, now, today's day and age, you need to have a permit, you know, everything has to be documented, just to, you know, just, it, it, it's a paperwork trail.
And let's clarify, that's not the paperwork that we are requiring, that's put on us.
Exactly. So I don't want the residents to think that we implemented rules that are really stiff or to go by, especially with this electric department, we've been having some problems with services lately, and one of the requirements is having a permit and also having a load data calculation sheet. I received one of these load data calculation sheets from the administrator today because I wanted to see what it consists of, and you know, I was wondering if there was a problem with the understanding of that. If you have any electrical background, which if you're gonna hire an electrical contractor to do your work to repair a service or put a new service in, I mean, looking at this sheet, it's a pretty common sheet, it's, it's an easy sheet to fill out, so I don't want people to say, oh, what I, what do I have to do?
Paperwork, just be afraid of it.
Yeah, don't be afraid of the paperwork, and you know, there's people that would help you with this, and if you have an electrician that knows electrical business, it's very easy for him to fill this paperwork out, to, to put in with your, with your permit. So I just don't want people to have the fear of, oh, what's a load calculation data sheet? It's just, it's very simple, you know, you got electric stove, you got electric stove.
And once again, this, this load data sheet is something that's a requirement on the village to perform, not something the village has decided to do.
Right, because as, as times change, there is more rules and regulations, and you have to follow them, so like the mayor said, it's nothing that we put in place, it's just guidelines that we have to follow. But I don't want people to like freak out because they have, you know, all this paperwork to fill out, it's just, it's a very simple, one sheet form.
As the old adage is, don't shoot the messenger.
Yes, so.
I get the thought of what you're saying, trustee Pelkey, that's, what you're saying is not unique to, to these electrical regulations, anytime there's new regulations that either we have, they're coming from either the state or the federal government, and.
Exactly, right.
As with anything else, if you have a document, there's somebody you can call and ask.
Right.
Even us.
Yes, I mean, I, I'd be willing to help anybody with these sheets, I mean, I understand them, I mean, it was, it's a simple sheet.
Paperwork can be scary, but.
We have people in place that could help, and just, just gotta ask, that's all, I just don't want people to freak out or, you know? Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Southwick.
I have a few things. First off, I have need of authorization to travel for Mr. Danny Gay to Verona, New York on, for May eighth, I'll just check in which date of the month that was, for May eighteenth for training purposes in the total amount of one thousand dollars and, one thousand, one zero, one two, one thousand and twelve dollars. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Menard absent, Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it, the authorization for travel for Danny Gay, our supervisor, the sewer plant will be, has been authorized by the board. Anything else, trustee Southwick?
I'm sure if he were here, trustee Menard would agree to thank the sixty-eight people who turned out to vote in the March eighteenth elections. I say this as a guy who's five foot eight, there's no, no small elections, only small Every vote counts, and we appreciate everyone who shows up. And lastly, on a personal note, I'm just happy to have another two years in the services of the village, and I want to thank each and every member of this board and the administration for helping me find my footing. I'm a, I'm a soft spoken guy, in case it was plainly obvious, but this entire board's been very open and accommodating in helping me find my voice on the, on this board, and I appreciate it.
No, I, I follow that up, I think this board works very well together, we, we appreciate the ability to work together to get things accomplished for the residents, and we will continue to work in that direction for all the village residents. Anything else, trustee Southwick?
I just wanted to follow up on a previous comment that trustee Pelkey made regarding wages. This, if you're looking, if any resident is looking at the village budget at the increased wage, you think they're about an average, or median increase like around eighteen percent-ish? Unless the treasurer would like to give me more accurate, or is it number, but I think around eighteen percent increase on the wage.
Well, I think it depends on the position.
Right. Yeah, and that's all listed in the village budget, and I do want to make note that our wages are not, have not been increased, ours is the same. This is making sure that our hardworking employees are getting a competitive wage as trustee Pelkey indicated.
Well, we, this is, just to follow up on that, what we've had is, is difficulty in a hurry, and because we, 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 Mr. Latchamore and I did, and we worked together very hard on this, was to contact all the municipalities in our, in our county, plus municipalities that had a water and sewer plant, plus a electrical substation to find out what the wage levels were so we could be competitive, because we've been having difficulty filling these positions. We've even had difficulty filling crossing guards during the school year. So we, we brought these wages up to make the Village of Ross's Point competitive. It doesn't do us any good to have all kinds of equipment, we have nobody to run that equipment, and we need to get some very capable people, and in order to do that, we have to make wages to reflect the cost of living and, and to draw these people to our village. So I think we accomplished very much today by passing this resolution to bring these wages up to competitive rates with the rest of the municipalities. I'm hoping it does, because we need people to come and work for our village. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. Anything else, Mr. Southwick?
I have nothing else.
Okay, without further ado, unless anybody else has anything, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you, gentlemen.